What it was. Missed you.
Welcome to the August 25, 2025 meeting. The Suckus City official advocation offered by Commissioner Toons, followed by the.
Dear God, we come to you today as humbly as we know how, but also with awesome gratitude. Gratitude for all that we are allowed to do in our lives, all that you've given us the opportunity to do, and everything that we see in life that you continue to do to make us stronger. We also thank you for the trials. We thank you for the tribulations and all of those evils that are lined up against us that sometimes tear us down, but we know that you are shaping us for a brighter future and at the same time making us stronger while you're doing that. So we pray that you continue to strengthen us, continue to be there for us and strengthen our will, our resolve, to do what's right for the citizens of Sandusky. All of these things, we pray. In your name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As far as you call it.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Crable.
Here.
Ms. Fargo.
Here.
Mr. Wantington.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Pajali.
Here.
Mr. Coons.
Here.
Commissioners, you have before the minutes of our meeting of August the 11th, 2025. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
To Wantington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the August 11th meeting as presented. Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Objection, the motion will be approved and no objection. That motion is approved. You do have a public hearing this evening on an amendment regarding the Board of Zoning Appeals. That hearing will be conducted by our chief planner, Eric Blair. And as this is a public hearing, we'll entertain questions from the public as well as from the commission at the conclusion of Ms. Blair's presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner President Brady. Before you today is a proposal to update our planning and zoning code, Chapter 1111. It's the Board of Zoning Appeals, Section 1111.01, Organization and Procedure, to allow the city commission president or the city commission member that's designated to serve on the board as the liaison to become a voting member for the duration of a meeting if not all members are present. We have BZA cases every month. Sometimes we find ourselves challenged to get a quorum of members for that board. So this would advance our strategic plan alignment to advance municipal services and create efficient public processes. So again, it would allow the city commission liaison to become a voting member for the duration of any meeting where there is not full board attendance. And at their regularly scheduled meeting on June 25, 2025, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended this draft change be revised according to their direction and adopted by city commission. We had originally had it drafted that it was any meeting without a quorum, and the Planning Commission recommended that we make it a little more broadly, that it's any meeting where there's not the full board in attendance, the city commission liaison would become a voting member for the duration of that meeting. And so that's what's before you today. So again, this is a public hearing to discuss that, and it's recommended the city commission make a motion to adopt the proposed amendment allowing, and it's further requested that it be passed in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Any questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burn.
I think this is a good move. I know in the past when I was on Planning Commission, we'd have six, seven, sometimes eight residents show up, and there'd be two or three of us looking at each other. I'm sure Ms. Fargo's seeing that now she's taking my place on the Board of Zoning, but I'm sure other ones are challenged to other committees. So I think it's a good deal. Thank you.
Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank you, Aaron, for pushing this along because it has been a point of contention for all of us to sit there and let down our residents when we're not there and prepared to handle what they need to get done. They want to move on with their lives and their projects. So I really appreciate this, and I'm glad that it's not voting on every one. No, just kidding. Very exciting. They'll be very happy to hear it.
So no additional comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Just one quick thing. I think it's good, but I was wondering as I sat here, and maybe I can be educated on this later, it's not something we need to talk about now, but why some liaisons who are commissioners vote on some committees and boards but not others or even all. So we can probably get back to that later, but if, you know, you wanted to get an explanation on that or how that works or where I can find the information of how that was established, that would help me.
I think we can, as the law director, not at this point, but at some point, to share with us the thinking behind that. I think it has something to do with the fiduciary responsibility in the decisions that they're making, but I could be wrong about that.
No, you, again, I don't know the thinking of previous commissions when they passed. Each one of these boards is controlled by a different ordinance, and I know they were well thought out at the time. We can look at them and give what we believe the possible justification was.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Additional comments?
Mr. Chair, and I'm, just as a reminder, as for all of us to think back, we did have this discussion a while back about it, Commissioner Coonson. I know that we talked about, because of what Mr. Hastings just cited, they're all individual and do things differently, so it's important for us to maybe look at them all individually, not to say that it can't be done in the future, right? So hopefully we'll do that in a case-by-case basis.
Sure, as the need arises. And I think this was very, rather glaring in that we had some meetings and went on, yeah, month after month, and you're dragging the applicant, you know, in and as you said.
I think we had three meetings in a row in the winter last.
That's no good.
Yeah. Where we didn't have a quorum.
This will certainly make us more efficient in that regard, and we can look at the other boards as they become issues too. I will declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Thank you.
Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your thoughts on the agenda items. I ask that you leave your comments to three minutes. No one's rushing to the podium, are they? Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. That objection, the motion will be approved during no objection. That motion is approved. Commissioners, we have three items on the consent agenda this evening. I would like to move one item. That is the item B on the fireworks code. I'd like to move that from the consent agenda to the regular agenda to correct a timing error that was placed in the first reading that perhaps we can correct in the second reading. Any other items on the consent agenda that you commissioners would like to move to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda, less item B.
Item A, new liquor license for AMS investment partners. Item C, approval to accept two parcels into the land bank from Habitat for Humanity.
Commissioners, having heard these, this liquor license hearing and this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I would move approval of the consent agenda, items A and C, under any applicable sections 13 or 14.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call and roll on the motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Now on the liquor license.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That liquor license and ordinance are passed. Ms. Myers, you present item B, which is now our first item.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 15 fireworks, fire prevention code, Chapter 1519 fireworks, Section 1519 dot oh four, possession, sale, or discharge prohibited exceptions of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky in a manner and way specifically set forth herein below.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for approval of this motion, I mean approval of this ordinance, under item B in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. As I mentioned just a bit earlier, I'm going to ask for a motion to correct a error that occurred in our first reading of this ordinance. We had incorrectly stated a time of 11:45 as the cutoff for fireworks should be corrected to 11:59. And I can have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second. An emotion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call and roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
I had a question, but yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That motion is passed. Now, what's your question?
Well, my question was, since we're doing this as a first and second reading, does the fact that we're changing that one element, being very small, does that require that we do yet another reading?
No.
Okay.
Now, we're, we can now discuss, we can discuss item B for the second time, or maybe the third time.
Yeah.
Any discussion on this or any comments? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that ordinance, please.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number one.
This is a first reading. It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 1 Administrative Code, Title 7, Boards and Commissions, by the adoption of Chapter 150, Boards and Commissions Procedures of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky in a manner and way specifically set forth herein below.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure? This is the point where someone should make a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
I move that we pass this at first reading, item one.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. As far as you call and roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed on first reading and will return to us for a second reading. Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code, Title 1, Zoning Administration, Chapter 1111, Board of Zoning Appeals, Section 1111 dot oh one, Organization and Procedure of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Sandusky in a manner and way specifically set forth herein below, and declaring this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call and roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to make payment to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Office of Coastal Management, for the rental payment on submerged lands leased, file number SUB dash zero five three oh dash ER, for the period of September 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2026, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Crable.
I would move approval of this ordinance, the item three ordinance, under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Nate Johnson's Landscaping Incorporated of Mentor, Ohio, for the 2025 USDA tree planting project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item four in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, we're getting 109 trees for 54 grand.
Yes, sir, and the 54 grand is coming from the federal government through ODNR, so.
Did we have some money left?
Yes, we, if you recall, we have $125,000 grant. A portion of it was allocated for the Churchwell Park project. I'm hopeful that that comes in under for, at least for the tree piece. We, so we may be able to add another $15,000 or so to this project once we finalize the Churchwell Park project. So right now, the completion date for this portion of the work is the end of November. If we do have to add additional trees, they may need to be planted in the spring, but we will come back to commission for the change order if we can add those trees to this project.
Great news. Good plan. Heard an interesting or wonderful quote the other day regarding planting trees, and that was, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second best time is now. We're doing it now, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
I stole that quote from someone, and I can't tell you who it was, so I'd credit them if I knew. Do you know, Mr. Murray?
It's an old one, it's been around a long time.
As have I.
True.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chair. Oh, go ahead.
I would like to add that at the next commission meeting, we're hopeful to bring an urban forest presentation to commission. So if there is, if there are any questions, get those to me ahead of time, as Elizabeth is working on preparing that now.
Ms. Fargo.
That was around my question. It's going to be, can we work on what kind of trees we put out and around? Not the kind that continually make a mess in your yard for the entire year, not just one season, but all four. And so if we could really work on that, I know they might be really great growing trees in our community, but less upkeep would be great.
Not the kind that lift sidewalks.
True.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blair.
We've had this discussion over the years, and the current administration has done a very good job of not making those same mistakes that we made so often, whatever that was, 30, 40 years ago, when we're dealing with the heaving sidewalks. And but what the staff has explained to us before, and I imagine we'll hear at the next meeting, is that we plant a variety of different trees in order to be able to protect the overall canopy, because from time to time, there is ash, this ash.
Bor.
Bor was another, one of, just the most recent example of those. And so that's why we do plant so many different types of trees. I'm glad that we do.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Yeah.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed MacArthur Park roadway and utility improvements project, improving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and declaring and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. White.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. This completes MacArthur Park, east and west, and does it, Mr. Klein?
Yes, sir, it does. We're going to be moving into northeast, south, and west forest, actually northeast and south forest and Parkview Drives. Then there's a little piece on that forest that goes between camp and east forest, so we have to finish everything up. And our contractor learned quite a bit, and we're trying to do everything on the same timeline as we did before. We felt it worked out really nicely, having most of the work through the winter, so we're going to try to do the same thing.
And once again, our thanks to Congresswoman Cafter for, we're spending the last of that EPA grant, the last $435,000 on it. Money we'll spend. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that, on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the 2025 Parks paving project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item six in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Cleveland Road Safety Improvement Project, PID number 114056, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, if we're successful at getting bids that fit our budget in this, what do you believe our timeline on something like this is?
So, we're hopeful to award this project in October, November at the absolute latest. I had a discussion with a couple people from Cedar Point last week, and both of them asked why we're closing the intersection entirely. I don't know where that rumor came from, but we will not be closing that intersection entirely. We will be ensuring that the contractor is working around that intersection. We're adding language to the contract that there's a limited, once the work starts at that intersection, there's a limited amount of time for them to finish that work. And not only there, but there's a lot of drainage and sidewalks going on the north side. The last thing we want is for a contractor to come in in April, dig everything up, and then finish everything in October. So, we're putting a timeline in that if they tear something up, they have to finish it or get back out there, can only sit idle for a week or two. The goal for the intersection itself is to be completed before the end of May, or beginning of May, so end of April. We're giving ourselves a little bit of leeway in there, maybe a week or two, a month at the most for when the heavy travel season comes into effect. So, we try to do that in most of these high traffic areas, the seasonal traffic areas as well. So, one of the reasons that we have to give such a long timeline, like if, if we don't see the contractor coming out right out of the gate, paving it in April and May, the reason is because we have to give a long timeline on the construction project. And the reason for that timeline is because a lot of the signals and other poles and things like that have a very long lead time. So, if we award the contract now, they're not going to be able to get to those, some of them possibly even into next fall. So, we have to give that for the overall project, but we're hopeful that the contractor gets in there very quickly and mobilizes, does that intersection, gets out of the way, and then just deals with the lights and signals and turn lane extensions and those types of things later in the year. So, once we bid the project, award the project in October, November, have that pre-con meeting with the contractor, then we'll know exactly what that timeline is, and we'll be able to pass that on to everybody. Hopefully, we have a contractor that's aggressive out of the gate as well.
I think what you're saying, Mr. Klein, is that this contract includes a, in many cases, or in every case, it includes a one-year timeframe, an easement, a temporary easement of one year. We have no intention of taking a year to accomplish this.
I can't imagine doing a year's worth of work at that intersection. The more we look at it, it looks like it's more like about two months' worth of work in that intersection. So, I can't imagine the impact being much more than five or six months, even with seeding and grading and everything else that would be at that intersection.
It certainly would our property owners want here, too. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now, on the resolution.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with TLC Properties LLC for the use of certain portion of the city's right-of-way as described in the grant of a license for encroachment related to the Cleveland Road Safety Project Improvement Project, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a bill, bill of sale for the completion of the new billboard structure to be placed within the encroachment, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Joe.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in effect, in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Last piece of the puzzle, Mr. Klein, is that correct? Get through the roundabout.
This is the last piece of acquisition that we needed, and this is not actually land that we're acquiring. It's that, that billboard that's on the land, and it's the rights to that billboard that's on the land, but we had to find a place for him to relocate that billboard. We gave Mr. Garrity three, four, five different options. He chose one that worked out the best for him, and it actually probably was the, worked out the best for the city. So, the second part of this is that encroachment into that right-of-way farther west on Cleveland Street.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that order.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Aye.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now, on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item, item number nine.
It is requested an ordinance be passed ratifying, accepting, and approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sandusky and Ohio Charter Municipal Corporation and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1519, the collective bargaining unit for certain employees of the City of Sandusky for the period January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, a copy of which is attached to this ordinance, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I move approval of this ordinance in full accordance with Chapter 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Orzak, can you give us a Reader's Digest version of what we accomplished here?
Yes, I will. The percentage of wage increases for the, that bargaining unit is three, three, and three. There's a different step increases that are in their contract. We eliminated step B, so all of the employees will move that are in that, those steps will move to C D E. And step G is their last step that normally took 10 years for employees to get there. We reduced that to six years to reflect similar contracts with police and fire, where are those employees top out after six years. The other minor changes were certifications, although not minor, certifications for their EPA requirements. Those certifications multiplied, so if they were $300, they went to $600 and down through each one. Those put us in line or in closer proximity to other water plants, sewer plants that are in our geographic area. And then, we changed the longevity to reflect the longevity of, that the fire contract got that raised their longevity years to $20 in each step. So, that's a bulk of the contract. We appreciate them ratifying that contract, and Stu, Michelle, Erin, and our other HR staff for getting that done. It's a lot later than normal, but we're happy that we got it accomplished.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak. This is the end of the line. This is, all three of them are done.
That's correct.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington. Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
And now, on the ordinance.
Mr. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Concludes our regular agenda, and we'll turn to our city manager for his place.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. We have a donation for Park and Rec. I'd like to thank Lake Erie Grinders for providing cookies and Pizza House Ease for providing pizza for summer break field trip. If we can get a motion to accept those donations.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Objection? The motion will be approved. Hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Our thanks to Lake Erie Grinders.
And the police department received a $500 donation for the K-9 fund from the Sandusky Rotary Club. If we can get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Objection? That motion will be approved. Hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Our thanks to the Rotary for the $500.
We will be hosting a groundbreaking for the landing project next Wednesday, September 3rd, at 3:00 PM behind the Cedar Point Sports Center. We invite members of the public to attend as we kick off the construction for this transformative waterfront project, and some of our state reps will be there as well, so we're looking forward to that. The, from finance, the city recently underwent a Moody's rating process prior to issuing our various purpose notes. Moody's reassured and retained the highest rating attainable of MiG I for our notes. And then, as our notes were bid out, the city awarded the $11,806,000 various purpose notes to Piper Sandler and Company at a net interest of 2.67%. The RFQ has been advertised last week for the Rec Center Design Build Project. The selection process will wrap up this December with award intended before the end of 2025. After construction projects, lawns are replanted with an ODOT-approved seed mix designed to grow quickly and prevent erosion. With July's extreme heat, followed by cooler weather in August, growth may look uneven. These mixes often include tall grasses and weeds, so the areas can appear patchy until the grass is fully established. Residents who want to, or want a more maintained appearance are encouraged to water and mow these areas themselves. The city and its contractors do not mow seeded, newly seeded lawns. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for Program Year 2024 will be on the city's website, seeking public comment from August 21st to September 5th. A public hearing will be held on September 5th at, or, excuse me, September 8th at 5:00 PM in the commission chamber. And then, thank you to the Whitman Weber Foundation for sponsoring this year's Safety Town program. With their support, we were able to host a record 98 children. The attendance was the highest that they've had so far, so we appreciate their support. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions that you have.
Questions or comments for the city manager? If not, we'll move to items old, because it's items of old.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.